This evening, I'd like to call this meeting to order and have the Council Vice President read the open public meetings access.
This meeting is called pursuant to the provisions of the open public meetings hall. The meaning of July 20, 2021 was included in the notice sent to the newspaper as a record and posted on the bulletin board in the municipal building as we may continuously post it as required purposes under the statute. In addition, the copy of this notice has been available to the public and on file in the office of municipal clerk.
Thank you, sir. Could you continue with the indication?
Yes, sir. Lord, we hope we ask that you watch over us, guide us this evening, and watch over our community and keep them safe and free from harm. Amen.
(inaudible) by the United States of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice.
Thank you, sir. I will call Deputy Claudia.
Council President McVey.
Here.
Council Vice President Polver.
Here.
Councilwoman DeGeraldo.
Here.
Councilman Piazza.
Here.
Sorry. Councilman White.
Thank you. Approval of Minister Aruna, Deputy Claudia, would you kindly read our filings with the public, please?
Probably. Current fund: $114,958.69. State and federal grants: $310.35. Capital fund: $59.17. Sewage utility fund: $1,551.44. Sewage capital fund: $19,600. Planning and trust fund: $27,511.50. Bridge development: $12,258.25. Section 8: $769.96. The general trust fund: $11,890. Agency fund: $346.91. Revolving loan funds: $435 for a total regular bills list as of July 20, 2021 of $189,691.27. The section 8 program: $164,906. The prepaid bills list current fund: $5,901. Agency fund: $154... I can't throw it off, guys, before I... Agency $154,207.85 for a total prepaid bills list for July 20, 2021 of $160,108.85. For a grand total of all funds: $514,706.12.
Motion. That was awesome. That was a crescent when my head is around...
I'll sign him.
There you go. Motion. That was Council Vice President Polver, and that was seconded by Councilman Piazza. Council discussion.
Councilman White.
I'll be upstanding from vendor number 7014, and yes, on all press.
Thank you. Councilman Piazza.
Yes.
Councilwoman DeGeraldo.
Yes.
Council Vice President Polver.
Yes.
Council President McVey.
Yes. As I've done in the past, I will move up our discussion this evening behind the bills list after we take care of town business. This evening, we have a representative from Carone, just because I believe that is here. Yes, sir? Please approach the podium and introduce yourself. Thank you. While the representative is making his way to the podium, I will also say during, under item number 10, you'll see the packet that there is a Carone discussion on the public discussions agenda items. That obviously is not going to be there, that's going to be here under number 7.
Thank you, Council President. Members of council, my name is Rob DeBier. I am the Director of Development for Carone Development. We've been asked to come here tonight to give an update on the project that we have proposed on Howard Street and to seek counsel actually to amend the redevelopment project that will eventually be presented to the town, oh, excuse me, the planning commission. The project that we are proposing to you now might be familiar to some of you on council. The Howard Street property is presently approved for a residential development of upwards of 450 units. Brief bit of history on that process. Way back in 2005, we petitioned the town to create a redevelopment plan and designate us as the redeveloper of that Howard Street property, which happened in 2005. Prior to that, the property was owned industrial. We had proposed a riverfront residential development. The town granted us the necessary relief to go forward with that proposal. In 2005, 2006, we proffered a plan of the 450 or so residential units, which were then ultimately approved by the town. We spent the better part of the next 15 years trying to develop that property for residential. We had no starts but several stops. We had just about every regional, national, and local home builder had come to the site, had walked the site with us, had... We tried to partner with or sell the property to them to be able to get that site off the ground, but ultimately were unsuccessful in those efforts, due in mostly large part to just the location of this property and the immediate surrounding environment. The challenges that we had identified back in 2005 that we thought could be overcome with the residential development were the surrounding properties, the industrial uses around it, the scrap yard to one side of the property, the pistol range to the other side of the property, and the Delta River Park, which was, again, a part that has some of its own challenges. We have, as I said, extensively tried to find a development partner who could help us put together an actual residential plan here and build those units out. Over 15 years were unsuccessful, and so we had shifted years recently and are proposing the concept that I know has made its way around and I think is going to be subject of discussion tonight, but to now propose an industrial use on that property. I know town council authorized the planning commission to prepare a study to determine an amendment to the existing redevelopment plan to allow industrial. I believe that recommendation came back from the planning commission and that was authorized by town council acting as redevelopment authority. So tonight before you, asking the town council as redevelopment authority to now amend the redevelopment project based upon what our current proposal is. I have with me Brad Bowler from Bowler Engineering, who's our project engineer. We have a couple of concepts that we could share with you. We talked a little bit about the project itself. Not too long ago, I know a preliminary concept plan we had has made its way around town showing the proposed development of 510,000 square feet. That was a concept that we have looked into, which would have required us to pursue and acquire a seven acre parcel property from the town into town owned and received through a green acres grant. After sort of investigating the process of decommissioning that property so that the green acres no longer exist, and including that property in the development, it became clear to us that that pursuit was timely, it was expensive, and unpopular. So we have abandoned the pursuit of that contiguous piece of property and are now proposing industrial development solely on the 31 acres that we own along Howard Street with a scaled down version of industrial building that's now 420,000 square feet. We are in the concept stage of this development, starting to get through preliminary engineering. Our plan is successful with the amendment we're seeking from council tonight to continue to advance that plan and get to the stage where we can do a submission to the planning commission, go through all the necessary engineering, prepare the necessary reports that are required, and hopefully seek an approval so we can begin construction on that project. That's sort of an overview of where we presently stand, what we're looking to do. As I said, I'm happy if we have plants here that we could put up on an easel, if there's one, Brad, we have one. We could share with you sort of what those concepts, the current concept looks like, and I'm happy to field any questions that council might have.
Mr. DeBier, at this time, I would suggest, because maybe some of your questions can be answered by presentation by the engineer?
Sure.
That in the essence of time and this redundancy, why don't we do that to fully get the toothpaste out of the tube on this one? And then we have questions on that.
Again, this is in concept form at the moment. This is the present plan with which we are currently working, engineering and pursuant to the planning commission. As you can see, we are no longer looking to acquire this seven acre piece of property that's owned by the township, and the township required with the benefit of green acres funding. Our development is solely focused on the 31 acres we have along Howard Street here. The building itself is 420,000 square feet. Again, it is a building that does not have an end user at the moment. Quite frankly, it won't have an end user until it gets under construction. The way that this industry is working at the moment, that these buildings are essentially built on spec, and as they start to construct, you start to receive interest from whether it's a development partner or it's an end user or a tenant that will come into the building. So as to who the end user is, whether it's a warehousing use, whether it's a manufacturing use, we won't know that yet, so our plan is to propose something here that can accommodate either type of user while also meeting the necessary bulk requirements of the zone with which it's located. Building's 420,000 square feet, there's roughly 400 vehicular parking spaces associated with it, about 80 loading docks, and we have a trailer parking for 39 trailers. We took some care to design the building so that it would not have to be one single user by putting the parking flanking either side of the building, that allows the building to be bifurcated, so it doesn't necessarily have to be one market user, it could be two smaller users, quite frankly, potentially could be three users. Again, we won't know who those users are and what size they will need until this building, quite frankly, gets under construction. But the idea is that this is a building that conforms with the amended zoning of this district, will meet all the necessary bulk standards and requirements, and as we go through the engineering exercise, we'll have to do, in the grade of the study, we'll have to do a stormwater analysis, we'll have to do a traffic analysis, all of the necessary things that do require us us to undertake and then present to the planning commission, which will be part of the land development application, and ultimately, hopefully, an approval.
Would you like to add anything? Would you like to add anything, sir?
No. Brad Bowler from Bowler Engineering, I think, covered it pretty much sufficiently.
Open for council discussion. Mr. DeBier, the first thing, for coming this evening, the prior approval for 450 residential units, how much square footage did that take up on that track?
I don't know that off the top of my head. Brad, I don't know if you... Brad was not involved with the initial plan that we did back in 2005, '06, and then the amended plan in 2013. From an purpose standpoint, do you have any?
Coverage wise, I don't... The development was the full profit?
The full parcel?
Yes.
Saying that's just being brought forested?
Yes, correct.
Okay. Saying it was brought forested back in 2017 by your firm?
Correct.
For, and it was, at that time, we were non-council, it was brought to the previous council, which was headed by Mayor Ellis at the time, the same parcel of land that they were going to allow you to build on back at the end as well?
That's correct. So the brief history, 2005 and '06, we sought and received approvals for 449 townhomes. Around 2013, 1415, we sought an amendment to that plan to permit some of those to be for rental properties similar to the garden apartment style project at that under 22 at Sigmar Lane. That ultimately went through a similar process. Both of those projects, the full for sale project as well as the for sale and rental project, again, just, we did not get any of the interest we hoped to get from any residential building.
Thank you very much. Appreciate you. Further council discussion? Sure. This council, sorry, this council and, you know, to say name, and Tom Holmberg, we've been working hard on a lot of trails and rail systems. This, the trails would go through this area. Is there an area that would still be left for that type of system to go through so it doesn't impede or, I guess, dissect that trail system that would hopefully go from, I guess, the southern end of Holmberg to the Union Square area?
So it would not impede that. So we have a trail conceptually shown on this plan. I think ultimately the designation of the trail location would be part of the conversation we would have, both here with the town as well as potentially the Morris Canal Committee at the county level. The Morris Canal sort of traversed in this area when we had this residential plan approved many years ago. We had worked with that advisory committee on sort of some trail specifics, whether it was seating, lighting, historical signage. So we're committed to having a trail component to this. Exactly where it's located, I think, is subject to some further conversation. Quite frankly, the ideas of those of you who want to sit on there.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. You mentioned this is going to be a spec building. Is it going to be a true spec building? Or, because from that avenue, you said you don't know who the tenants would be, so you'd be building it to their specifications and you would need to lease it out before you build that? Essentially, meaning you're going to cookie cutter the building up, it'll start as a shell in a warehouse and divide it up, put firewalls in for separate businesses, et cetera. Is it going to be a multi-floor or...?
No, it'll be a single floor building. The core, the shell of the building is essentially a spec building that goes up.
It is a spec building.
It's built on spec. When a tenant or an end user is identified, that's when we come in and we start to do the necessary architectural and engineering work for what that fit out is going to entail. So different users obviously have different requirements with what they need for the building. If it's a warehouse or distribution facility, they have different requirements. If it's a manufacturing facility, they have different requirements. Even the extent of how large the office space within the building is going to ultimately be up to who that end user is. So with the way the market is proceeding right now, where there's so little vacancy within this space, within the size, what's happening all over is that when these get approved, they get started building in spec right away, and then it's a race to secure the tenants to locate within the space. Once they're located, obviously, then the fit out takes a separate component of it.
I think the rest of my questions are going to be primarily related to the resolution we have in front of us. The, so you believe you have a need you can fill with people you're going to partner with on a warehouse or industrial use versus residential? Because there's a shortage of residential right now. I'm kind of surprised. I get the challenges, the pistol. There's something I'll address as we get into the nuts and bolts, which isn't for you by any means.
I'm happy with the answer.
Related more to the master development, but you said you would address the traffic plan as part of the planning board?
Yes, so when we go through the land development approvals, the land development process, the requirements for the planning commission, submission requirements requires to put together a traffic impact study and analysis to determine what impact this type of development have on the traffic patterns, and then any impacts that would be there would have ultimately be addressed by the planning commission or the town council.
So if that doesn't happen, and that traffic pattern is determined unsuitable, what will we do?
If what traffic pattern is unsuitable?
Too much. So basically, that area started out as industrial, and residential was built up behind it, which is the natural flow of how things work in communities. Starts out residential, railroad is there, ideally, the railroad to the river, to the major construction companies. All the residential popped up to support the people working in the industrial. That's the way it works. It's usually not the opposite, which is my biggest concern with this project. Nothing against you all personally, it's just, it's the fit for our downtown community. These homes were all built, so people could be working in those places. These are a lot for retired people who've lived there all their lives at this point. My parents are homeowners of one of them, so I feel like I know them pretty good. I don't see putting industrial where residential is existing as a benefit, but that's not, nothing to do with having... The spec building piece has me a little concerned, just from, I'm in construction, full disclosure, I'm in building materials, I do this for a living. The spec building piece concerns me a little bit. I'm a decision made for industrial and what it may become, because if you're not confident you know what's going to go in there yet, nor am I. It could be another pistol factory, for all I know, it could be a marijuana cultivation, for all I know, and that would not, I would not be happy about that.
So...
Based on what I know about marijuana cultivation, I would not be happy about that.
As it relates to the spec building purchase, to go back to that, unless the developers and end user, all of these facilities today are built entirely on spec, you could look no further than the bridge development up the road. Everything there was built long before they secured it.
By the pouring concrete on site?
Correct. So that's just the nature of this industry right now. There's just, there's, if I had to secure a tenant now, by the time I got this approval and built that tenant, the space they need, they're long enough to find, build it somewhere else. They just, they don't have the time to wait to go through the process, which is why tenants are typically identified sometimes six to nine months before completion, because then they can schedule their fit out and they're moving. As it relates to traffic, you know, we'll have to go through the requirements from the planning commission since the traffic study. I can tell you that the present approved plan here contemplated 2,800 vehicular trips a day coming out of the development of 450 homes. Again, we'll have to do the analysis, but fundamentally, something of this size is going to produce probably less than a quarter of that in terms of total traffic trips. The other thing I'll say is, you know, when you see a building of this size, you think everyone immediately thinks it's going to be nothing but trucks all day long. As I said, this facility is just likely to become a manufacturing facility where you have 300 people working there, and you don't have a whole lot of heavy truck traffic. Again, we don't know who that is, so what we're going to do is we are planning for a scenario in which we can accommodate either or of those two primary uses that would fill a building like this. Again, I can't tell you who the tenants may be. I think what we have done is we have taken some steps to promote that this could become more likely to be a manufacturing facility. At 420,000 square feet, it's on the lower end of what warehousing distribution facilities like to see. They're typically wanting to see 500, 600,000 square feet or more. With the ability for this building to be bifurcated by stacking the parking either side, and we end up with potentially 200,000 plus square foot tenants, that's almost likely to be a manufacturing facility as opposed to any type of warehousing or distribution. So we are proposing a plan that hopefully can accommodate all the scenarios, but we just won't know who the eventual user is going to be until we get further down the road.
I have one last question, and it might be escaping me right now, because I'm going to dig up the rest piece of what you had to say. I'll come back to it if I can figure it out. Thank you.
Yeah, I'd just like to come back to that. Just a few weeks ago, just for a quick refresher, we have, we just changed a redevelopment plan based on a, a spec on the fly basically for bridge development. A warehouse, an actual warehouse, was altered in the course of construction. We unanimously sent it to, approved it, but so everyone on this panel does know how that works. Thank you.
Do you have some plans to build the Howard Street extension out to Center Street to get your traffic out to the lower end of South Main Street so it's not going through the highly dense, repopulated area?
Yeah, so that's a concept that's been talked about. Councilman White, you know better than anybody. You were, you sat through all these meetings since 2005 and on, so that is an opportunity that's potentially unisable. It's probably something I think would get addressed if there are offsite contributions or improvements that are required, get it addressed through an amended redevelopment agreement, which we'll get to. I just don't, I don't know if it's warranted. Again, the total number of trips we're going to generate from this facility is far fewer than what was approved of the residential development many years ago. And again, whether this becomes heavy truck traffic or not, this still is dependent upon who the end user is. If this does become a predominantly manufacturing facility or full manufacturing, we have 300 passenger vehicles leaving this on a daily basis, and those are exactly the type of people we don't want to have bypasses, I've made sure to get out of the 78. We prefer them to go through and populate our businesses, whatever, diners, restaurants. So if it's warranted, if offsite improvements are warranted, I think that's going to be discussed as part of the planning process. I just don't know yet if that's, if that's necessary, but it's not something that's qualitative.
If you were to have a warehouse, you know, the truck traffic, the tractor trailer traffic is a lot different than, you know, automobile traffic. That, you know, so that would, that would change how you look at things if it's a warehouse opposed to manufacturing. Frankly, I don't know, you know, how much demand there is for manufacturing in this area that's, you know, been dwindling for years. It's why we're, you know, just a bedroom community.
I can't disagree with that. I think that the way in which these buildings are being developed, everyone is shooting for 600,000 square feet above, that seems to be the magic number where you start to get a larger pool of distributors. When you get these smaller sizes, you have an opportunity to attract the smaller manufacturers who are getting priced out, quite frankly, of space, because all the space is being taken up from warehousing. This area is attractive for manufacturers because you have a large labor pool here, it's highly populated, you have access to major markets, and you're seeing that sites that weren't manufacturing sites further east of here or further, more so further east of here, those manufacturers are being pushed out of those buildings because the dollars are better for those buildings to go to bulk distribution. So there is a renewed interest in manufacturing, and again, the size we're proposing here, I would say that it's likely that the manufacturer does come here. I just can't say that with any certainty at the moment. As far as the truck traffic, again, if it becomes heavy on truck traffic, we'll have to address that, and if offsite improvements are necessary, we can discuss how that, how that gets handled. But the trucks are there. I went down to the site today, there were seven trucks idling in front of this property waiting to get into, you know, your McDonald's. Two trucks abandoned, and seven just stacked up waiting to go. So the trucks are, they're there, they are finding their way from 78 down to this area back. So the infrastructure's there, be able to accommodate it.
Opposed to warehouses?
I'll just, it came up with my question number one, and I wanted to piggyback off something, Councilman White, and said, so 16 years, a lot happened in that 16 years from the residential project. Is this going to take another 16?
No. With an approval, this, I don't want to be coy, with an approval, this will be built in 16 months.
You know, I know what's going on. Like I said, right now, you can't get concrete, you can't get drywall, you can't get anything until quarter two, 2022, and from the manufacturing perspective, and we, this is where I'm going to piggyback off him. Trust me, as a manufacturer, we have trucks coming and going all day long. They're picking up and they're taking stuff off to warehouses all day long, all day long.
Yeah, the supply chain is an issue, particularly buildings like this.
Supply chain is a big issue.
Steel stuff, precast is hot, so that, you know, that's all disrupted, I acknowledge that.
Yeah, as a labor...
For 16 years.
As a labor right now, you know, again, speaking from some level of experience, $3 more an hour, we still can't get people to come to work and manufacture. And that's somebody that's made in America for over 30 years old. We just can't get people to come to work right now for manufacturing. And, I mean, we have New Jersey locations, but we've had to farm out to other states to get people to come to work. So it's a challenge. I'll be honest, I wish this project was on North Main, just to, I'd have bells on and be clapping hard if it was on North Main, just because people come off 22 and go right into your facility, I'd be much happier. I do agree with the previous, the master plan, the previous entity. I really believe a project like this belongs on North Main. I'd be all too thrilled to be so supportive of it if it was down there. I'm just not thrilled with the location of it. It's just, I'm being honest.
Further council discussion? How far off the water is this?
So this property sits both, that's obviously back in the water... As far as the truck traffic, again, if it becomes heavy on truck traffic, we'll have to address that, and if off-site improvements are necessary, we can discuss how that, how that gets handled. But the trucks are there. I went down to the site today. There were seven trucks idling in front of this property waiting to get into, you know, McDavid Ave. Two trucks abandoned, and seven just stacked up waiting to go. So, the trucks are, they're there. They are finding their way from 78 down to this area back. So, the infrastructure's there. Be able to accommodate it.
What was the warehouses?
I'll just, it came up with my question number one, and I wanted to piggyback off something Councilman White said. So, 16 years, a lot happened in that 16 years from the residential project. Is this going to take another 16?
No. Within approval, this, this, I don't want to be coy. When approved, this will be built in 16 months.
You know, I know what's going on. Like I said, right now, you can't get concrete, you can't get drywall, you can't get anything until quarter two, 2022, and from the manufacturing perspective, and we, this is where I'm going to piggyback off him. Trust me, as a manufacturer, we have trucks coming and going all day long. They're picking up and they're taking stuff off to warehouses all day long, all day long.
Yeah, the supply chain is an issue, particularly the buildings like this.
Supply chain is a big issue.
Steel stuff, precast is hot, so that, you know, that's, that's all disrupted. I acknowledge that.
Yeah, as a labor.
For 16 years.
As a labor right now, you know, again, speaking from some level of experience, $3 more an hour, we still can't get people to come to work and manufacture.
It's like, it's more than twice.
And that's somebody that's made in America for over 30 years old. We just can't get people to come to work right now for manufacturing. And, I mean, we have New Jersey locations, but we've had to farm out to other states to get people to come to work. So, it's a challenge. I'll be honest, I wish this project was on North Main. Just, I'd have bells on and be clapping hard if it was on North Main. Just because people come off 22 and go right into your facility, I'd be much happier. I do agree with the previous, the master plan, the previous entity. I really believe a project like this belongs on North Main. I'd be all too thrilled to be so supportive of it if it was down there. I'm just not thrilled with the location of it. It's just, I'm being honest.
Further council discussion?
One question. How far off the water is this?
So, this property sits both, that's obviously back from the water, the rail line, the excursion line, the grate line presently and continually will block this site from the river. So, there's no direct river access from this property there. And it's also high enough above, you know, back when we had this approved, and years ago, we went through all the necessary flood hazard area information, and we are outside of, you know, a local flood lane, so there are.
Yeah, anybody who lives down there knows that it drops like 16 feet.
Yeah.
Yeah, the site 55, well, it didn't, it barely made it past Howard Street.
Yeah. Yeah, the site has some photography to it, which will be, you know, a challenge. It's something that we'll, we'll figure out how to do there.
All right. Spirit, I want to thank you and your entire organization for coming here this evening, for going through the litany of lies that have been passed around publicly. Unfortunately, as sometimes the business sure, you are, and your entire team, you are professionals, and you have withstood it in entire professionalism and integrity. You and I have had a few talks, and I found them to be enlightening and education on my mind. I do have painful actor upon this, which I will expand more on the introduction of the resolution under new business, but hopefully you guys are on your way home by that, unless you want to stay. Your bifurcated plan, I like it. I think it's smart. Howard Street extension, as we've talked about. Quite honestly, I'm probably the first elected official after say this, and it should have been done many, many years ago, but if you stand, and I believe we have a few residents that live on the corner of King Street, Mercer Street here in the audience tonight, their house is shaking when trucks go through there. And that has been going on probably since, I don't know, 1930, 40, whatever. That's not a you problem, that's an us problem. And actually, as a councilman and while I'm still here, to the end of the year, hopefully longer, I'd like to introduce that the town actually take ownership of the Howard Street extension and work with our town engineers and forward with that, because quite honestly, the residents of Mercer and McKean and everything else should not have trucks going through it. The Howard Street extension should have been something that should have been looked into, especially when the former properties were there actually before foreclosure, just not, I believe, in 2017, 2018, that we could have purchased as a town and moved forward through a proper extension, and then putting the no left turn at the Center Street and South Main Street to avoid the truck traffic and sending them out to US 122 and out to 22 and 78. That's on us, what I'm saying here tonight. So, thank you for your inclusion in that, and I know that the engineer, of course, from Van Cleve, who's outstanding, had mentioned that as part of the plan, and it will be, and if this plan goes forward, we're going to have that extension, but it's going to be on us, and we'll figure it out. And we'll work together as partners, because I believe, speaking with your representatives as well, that you are stakeholders in this town, above and beyond the rails and trails, as I mentioned in the WLMC deal. So, we'll figure that out, and I'll take the engineers' brain over there in a little bit. May I ask how many parking spaces you needed?
So, this plan proposes, I think, 402 vehicular parking spaces.
That's a lot of jobs, right, Mr. Peter?
They all get filled, yes?
Thank you. I was speaking to mostly, what I did was, the last two weeks, I've been walking to all the businesses on South Main Street, asking if they would appreciate the fur traffic of people who needed lunch, or lottery tickets, or dinner, or breakfast, or a haircut, or flowers, possibly a dry cleaner back to Phillipsburg. That's the vision that we need. That's the people we need. We cannot become what we want if we remain who we are. And I thank you for coming before us this evening to allow us to change in an industrial park, which I believe I'm going to approximate your southwest corner is about 325 feet along the Delaware River across from a sewer plant in eastern Pennsylvania. And I believe your northwest corner is approximately 550 feet off the water. That's not waterfront. And to best of my knowledge, I serve redevelopment subcommittee along with Council. Yes, I don't believe I've ever discussed anything involving that park for sale. So, I like what you got right there, and there's a lot of luck with it. The last thing I'm going to touch on is the residential piece. I know Councilman mentioned that there is, she's right. She's 100% right. We need a residential piece in our redevelopment plan, but we got it in our $80 million piece that's going to land in Union Square with 200, 200 residential, one and two bedrooms, which is going to bring approximately 425 people to Phillipsburg. I'm getting there. I don't know. The, the, the project that's proposed, which I really get into my open time on, Union Square, the waterfront right down there, that is the 200 residential spots. It's going to be 400, probably 425 people. That is also part of master plan. That's there. And the council will mention North Main. North Main is a quarter mile north of Union Square. Your project's a mile and a quarter south. So, I like you where you're at. I've said it before, apples to apples. You're on Howard Street. You're an industrial park. You're across from gun ranges and everything else. And with that said, I just want to thank you for coming here tonight. Okay, thank you.
Can I have a quick question? The rail system that goes to the south, is it possible for transportation materials to be in that rail system? I, I don't, I know that is...
Yeah, so a rail line could not be brought to the site with a degree differential.
The grading differential? All right, thank you.
Can the public?
No, on, on agenda items, you can. The discussion, I said in 2021, would be that I just.
It's not a sewer plant, it's a.
Hey, I'm sorry.
Agreement plant.
That's one warning, that's one warning. The next morning, I do have an officer in the building. The next morning, sir, I will ask the officer to remove you from the building. Thank you for your civility. I will remind the public, we do have, in this case, two options. It's on agenda items and public session.
All right, before I move on to announcements, I would like to further clarify what we have this evening. The councilman is going to explain the process of what we have presented for us.
Thank you, Council President. So, Perone has been designated as the redevelopers of the Howard Street properties that you all know as we've been speaking about tonight. Their current designation as redevelopers for a project, as we've heard reference, of residential components, there is a redevelopers agreement that was executed by the town, and the developer whereby Perone is going to construct the 400-plus residential units along Howard Street. In order for Perone to make an application, we've submitted an application to the planning board for a project that is different than the project for which they were authorized by the council to undertake. The council first must, one, authorize the new project, and, two, authorize an amendment to the redevelopers agreement whereby the rights and obligations of the respective parties as it relates to the potential construction of a new project on Howard Street would be set forth in that redevelopers agreement. To that end, I have prepared a resolution, which, although it's long, essentially says two things. The first is that, and again, this is adopted by the council, the project as proposed tonight in concept is approved by the council, which means that Perone can then go before the planning board on its site plan approval process. Second thing it does is authorize and direct the mayor to negotiate and present to the council an amended redevelopers agreement, as I discussed as well. That needs to be done. What also has to happen is that, and I'm glad Rob is still here, so, and I, I know you and I have had this conversation offline, but there is, as Mr. Mayor can attest, a financial agreement or a pilot that is currently in place for this project. It is my understanding that that financial agreement or the pilot is not being sought by the developer at this time. Is that correct?
The existing pilot would have, yes. The existing pilot would no longer be valid for this.
Correct. So, we would discharge, Mr. Mayor has had, we would, we would discharge that financial agreement. There would be representation between the parties, and the financial agreement is no longer of any force and effect. So, that would also have to happen this part, this part of the process.
Thank you, sir. Okay. I do have one announcement. Today, myself and Councilman White, along with Mayor Dr. Sigourney, had a very nice afternoon out at Channy Shop, who has their very first ribbon cutting of their 16 car washes. We were very proud that they chose Phillipsburg to have their first ribbon cutting. It was a very nice afternoon. It was sponsored by the Chamber, and I just want to say, especially for me, that was actually the last job I had from '84 to '86 working from College Hill at Channy Shop for Craig's. And Craig Stent, it was a wonderful experience before I went on to what I did for many years. So, it was extra special for me, and if you have not gone through there, it's great. If you're not at Channy Shop, first time I look into it, it's very convenient. I think it's in four counties, Lehigh, Manhattan, 101. Okay, old business. I don't have any old business. Is that correct, Deputy Frank Lombardi? Just make sure I'm okay. I don't have any old business here, correct? Yes, Ben. Always pretty check. All right, mayor's and administrative officers' offices reports. I do see our business administrator here, Mr. Benjamin. Do we have a mayor's report this evening?
Uh, yes.
Sorry. Is there anything, sir, you would like to add? You are, you are, you are the figure on the pulse of the town every single day. We talk a few times a week. Is there anything that you want to mention to the public that would actually help them move on for the next couple of weeks?
No, I think that, you know, my office is always open. I have a few residents over the past, a couple of weeks, and, you know, feel free to contact me. Obviously, on the agenda tonight, we have our capital project that you guys are going to be looking forward to do over the next few months, and I will work with you along the way to make sure that those, whether it's garbage trucks, streets people, those D and K, that we do in a orderly fashion and proper fashion, in ways I'm here for, for anything.
Mr. Benjamin, just to be clear, the broken down list you provided was at the mayor's request?
Uh, yes.
Okay, thank you. I just want to make sure that this.
Does council, any further questions for the business administrator? Are there any council members that would like to report on their committees?
Quickly, sir, with the recreation advisory committee, I spoke with Superintendent Coe Fazey, who has explained to me the projects that he will have done by Halloween. He will have the Chambers Street Park upgraded, Brainerd Street basketball court. The Mercer Street basketball and ADA upgrades will be done. Bentley Field will have the fencing completed. The sports field safety maintenance plan will be completed. The fall and winter program guide will be done. Youth sports best practices guide will be adopted by all organizations, and the Walters Park bathrooms will have their contracts signed for replacement. If anything, the recreation department and the recreation advisory committee, along with the open space advisory committee, have gone above and beyond and continue to impress. So, I'd like to thank you all for your hard work.
Thank you for your report, sir. Any other council members like to report on their committees they serve on? I want to give you something new tonight. It's going to be the council president report. And what I did halfway through the year was I sent a titled 2021 Midway Follow-Ups. You've heard me say this before. I know this is Mr. Voice's favorite term, and I'm going to pull back the curtain of Oz a little bit, let you peek in to some of the stuff that goes on. But it's all good. It really is all good. It just goes to show you how, what this working council is doing, and working with the administration, or asking some of the very hard questions. But it allows the public to understand because you do get to see us twice a month. You can reach out and touch us and speak to us for real. I'm hoping that the municipal building can open soon. I'm hoping that the, we suggested to the mayor, myself, and council vice president, spoke to the mayor, the business administrator in December of 2020, and suggested that there would be, sort of like a, however the administration wanted to determine, but have an open discussion where the other former government gets to answer some questions. That would help you, because I know a lot of you have questions for us, and we do our best to answer them. But if it doesn't fall within our wheelhouse, it makes it kind of tougher even to try to answer them, or I'm one to always say to stay in your lane, so I try to practice what I preach, stay in our lane. So, it's very easy for the first two years, but it's very easy for us to say, contact extension 302. 303, remember those days, right? So, right now, it's, it's going very well. You have an excellent business administrator going forward who actually answered me on these questions. So, I just want to read to you real quickly some of the eight points that I had sent into the administration on behalf of the council, a lot of the midway follow-ups, to let you know that what we do on our off time. The first question was, and let me just at least introduce how I said it. I just said, morning, Todd, I hope this email finds you well. I know this is a holiday, but my schedule dictates getting this out while I can. There's absolutely no expectation to reply back today. But as we approach July 1st, 2021, I would like to keep some tasks on the front burner and continue to work towards completion and resolve that list. And those eight questions were, how are we making out with the Rogers Group and accreditation process for our emergency services? And that actually is on the agenda tonight, which is fabulous. Secondly, is your intentions on the upcoming Phillipsburg Police Department Sergeant vacancy, as I discussed at our council meeting. There are currently two vacancies, and with this non-field operational road sergeant position, you can break it down into two officer positions. This bodes true with the cost savings from the two vacancies that are not being paid out. If so, that is a total of four vacancies for the upcoming September, October academies throughout the state, I believe. There is a female candidate within that reach of this position. He's originally a patrolman's position, but the, but the former mayor among today on the Patriots John Promotion List in 2016 without any paperwork justification. We need officers on the street more than ever, and I asked to meet with council vice president on that prior to any promotional movement. That didn't happen. Hazardous waste pain ordinance, question number three. How are we dealing with the enforcement and 1969 contract discussions from the Phillipsburg Housing Authority for a new shared services agreement to more, all into that? We were looking forward to having a new shared services agreement with the Phillipsburg Housing Authority. Again, we did shoot that down in a resolution, but we, I am extending the olive branch here by if I have to have it back. There is answers by the business administrator, and they are all answered appropriately moving forward. The only thing that we have here in office, as you can attest to that, is the Rogers Group. Everything else is being worked on. Two very important things, actually, three very important things coming up is the Phillipsburg Free Public Library Board update. I believe there are still two board positions that should be validated. Your positions on reconstructing these positions. The mayor agrees that he should have an appointment last year and this year. So, what happens is the mayor gets an appointment every single year. Mayor Dr. Sigourney has not had the opportunity to have an appointment. So, we're working with our attorney and the board and the mayor to try to get that straight, get that board to actually come before council for approval, consenting approval. That has not happened. That's gone back to the former administration as well. It doesn't want everybody's claim, but I have brought this to the forefront, asking about the library, and actually for the protection of the library and its board. Number five, the Phillipsburg Free Public Library 2020 budget. Have there been any preliminary discussions at this? If I'm here in 2022, I want to ensure they get a fair seat at the table and avoid that tempo and airing out of all costs, all over. and avoid that tempo and airing out of all costs all over again. We've agreed for your offices to meet sooner than later for twenty twenty-two with their director and board representatives. Doesn't really sound like we're against the library, does it? All right. Number six, Phillipsburg Free Public Library occupancy. It was introduced to the director and the board president, the possibility of moving into the current town hall, formerly framing school as a spot down. That is the mayor's discretion, by the way, not council's. That would have to be a complete of council, council of the correct, the complete change in use would do that. So it would be the mayor's choice to do that. I have been on him since forever. This would be the library. This would put the library in a more operable position and strategically place its services in the middle of town, completely walkable without crossing the highway for most of our children. Again, it doesn't sound like it's a lot better. Number seven, follow up on our storm water issue downtown. We need to meet with officials to determine sooner or later what are the issues before the next meeting. Lastly, State Line United Union Square, principal for updates and land acquisition discussion. As we discussed with their principal, would like to come to your office now that monies have been satisfied and we have got that done. So that was my little state of the state into the administration. And that was actually represented by all members here on council and their votes. And just want to let you know that this is what we do. So when you see the narrative and you see things out there or you hear things out there, you can open for anything you want or I'll just read you here in the meetings of the town council president updates. So I hope you liked my first one and I'm going to move on with the rest of the meeting. Public discussion on agenda items. You will have three minutes. I'm going to. If you would, please state your name and more importantly, the address, your address. Keep it centric to the agenda items here this evening. I will always say if there are any questions for council, myself or councilors at home, please email us and then you can have your actual time to speak your statements in that full three minutes, instead of exchanging into a question and answer, but you will have three minutes regardless. Sir?
Joseph Meyer, three ninety-two South Main Street, Phillipsburg. Ordinance twenty twenty-one dash sixteen. At the last council meeting, I was told that the principal of two point seven million dollars was included in the budget. My interest is transparency. In rereading, I find the following and I quote from this. Section one, dot, dot, dot. Said down payment is now available by virtue of a provision in the previously adopted budget. And the quote goes on, close the quote. The public should know that the down payment is included in the budget, but the principal, which requires additional bonding, is not, or would not require a bond. The budget is not increased, but borrowing and spending occurs. This ordinance represents an increase in costs of either sixteen percent or nineteen percent, depending on how you figure. Second point, ordinance twenty twenty-one dash eighteen. And I quote, "An ordinance prohibiting the operation of cannabis businesses within the town of Phillipsburg." Dot, dot, dot. Section two, six, two, five, dash, nine, eight, dash, A, dash, four, dot, dot, dot. Cannabis uses, dot, dot, dot. All classes of cannabis establishes, more dots, comma, accepting delivery of the cannabis items, shell, dots, ashelby, and hereby are prohibited in all districts. To me, it says, if you buy your dope by mail, it's legal, otherwise it's illegal. It's difficult, if not impossible, to collect a local tax on mail. Let's sell it retail and tax it, or not sell it at all, or at least fix the dumb paragraph.
Thank you for your comments, sir.
Right, is it appropriate to talk about Perone Project though?
Yes, sir.
Reggie Raggett, Phillipsburg, three ninety-eighth Street, seventy years. Resident of Phillipsburg. Phillipsburg is the largest town in Warren County and Phillipsburg does not have a supermarket. But we have warehouses. We have lots of warehouses where they should be, on the highway. Phillipsburg is the poorest town in Warren County. And Phillipsburg doesn't have a supermarket. But we've got warehouses, lots of warehouses with lots of parking for those trucks out there. And it's where it should be, on the highway. That's called smart growth. You put your warehouses, you put your manufacturing on the highway. We all know that. I would, we would all love to see manufacturing out there in Angersall, right? We're happy that there's something there, but there's, I don't think there's much manufacturing going on there. I don't think there's much manufacturing going on out there in Angersall, right? I'm afraid it's all warehouses, but that's where the warehouses should be, on the highway, not in a historic downtown Phillipsburg. We have one opportunity to make Phillipsburg attractive. All we have to do is look across the river to Easton. Phillipsburg not that far behind. Okay, it's behind, but it's not that far. We have Lambertville on the Delaware River. All of us have driven up and down the Delaware. You've been to Lambertville, you've been to Stockton, you've been to Milford, you've been to Frenchtown. Phillipsburg is next, but not with a warehouse. In the historic downtown part of the Phillipsburg, we can develop every town in the United States. Would love to have the, every poor town like Phillipsburg. Would love to have the opportunity Phillipsburg has right now to develop the Delaware River. But not with a warehouse down there. It's the wrong thing. We all know that. Mike Perucci has an opportunity. Mike Perucci is the developer. Mike has an opportunity to give that land back to Phillipsburg. We have an opportunity, talk to Mike. We have an election coming up this year. Let's get Paul Marfree over here, running for governor. Let's get Jackson Dorelli over here, running for governor. And let them tell us that's the best thing, that's how we want to see Phillipsburg develop. When Phillipsburg becomes an attraction, that benefits Phillipsburg, it benefits Warren County, it benefits the state of New Jersey. We all know that. We can't have a warehouse in downtown Phillipsburg. It just, we can do better. And we have to ask Mike to donate that property. And Mike, when Mike Perucci's on his bed bed, he won't be saying, oh, the best thing I ever did for Phillipsburg was put a warehouse in historic downtown. That's not what Mike Perucci.
Thank you so much, sir.
And it's not what we want.
I always appreciate your comments.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you so much.
Built them in two thirty South Main Street. On this Perone development, that tract of land, that tract of land would be much better served if Mr. Perucci would give it back to the railroad historians to have it back as a railroad museum since Phillipsburg has such a history in the railroad. It would bring passenger traffic, not truck traffic, to the area. He bought it out from under what they were going to build there by the railroads, by putting in an interactive museum with a bunch of outbuildings for souvenirs and shopping and what have you. It would be much better if he would donate that back and maybe offset some of the cost to bring in what he had killed fifteen years ago. My point being.
Thank you for your comments, sir.
Good evening. I'd like to thank.
Sorry, you have a job.
Oh, David Morsette. I always forget. Five Fairs, New Heights, Phillipsburg, New Jersey. I'd like to thank the representatives from Perone Construction for coming out and presenting their idea. I will note that the representative said that what Perone Construction was originally looking to do was to develop a riverfront residential property. If you notice, the keyword there was riverfront. So what they developed on that property is on the riverfront. It might not be at the edge of the water, but it is on the riverfront. It looked on that picture like the loading dogs are towards Easton. So I'm just pointing that out. There was no discussion as to what the height of the building would be and many of the other characteristics. If this being approved, it was mentioned it could be a warehouse. It might be a manufacturing facility, but it could be a warehouse. And it sounds like some of the more knowledgeable people in council feel that it would be a warehouse because manufacturing really isn't taking hold right now. There was a mention of a pilot being eliminated. I hope there's not a pilot for the project. When people come into Phillipsburg, they should be coming in without a pilot and contributing to the town, contributing taxes to the town. Yeah, I guess that's what I have for now. Thank you very much. I appreciate the time.
Thank you for your comments, sir. At this time, I'll close. Full discussion, agenda items. Do we have some? My apologies, my head was down.
No, that's okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Happy Baker, eleven nineteen Logan Street. And I just want to say that life has changed since IR turned into warehouses. The trucks are coming down Logan Street. They're coming down flying. I can't even go down the hill to turn in my driveway because I'm looking in my rearview to see if the tractor trailer is on my butt. Primary school, first and second grade, buses, fifty-two kids and a driver pulling out on Crane Street. These trucks ran a lady off the road right past the school. How do you think it's going to work now with the buses and the trucks? There's an ordinance for a weight limit and nobody abides by it. It's, they're spray painting the signs now because it's ridiculous now the truck traffic. And if you're going to send the trucks up center, past the early childhood center with five hundred kids? Come on, this is, it's going to be a disaster. One accident, you're going to lose fifty-two kids. That's pre-three, pre-four and kindergarten. How can we allow this? How can we allow this? There's kids everywhere and you want the trucks going up center? Or are they going to turn down Logan? I mean, I have a problem with it because when it disturbs my way of life, just trying to exist, and you have this truck path and there's no regard, nobody wants to hear about it. The trucks are stuck at the bottom of Lock Street. Please escort her right up Logan. All the signs say weight limit, no right turns, trucks over X amount. But you're doing it and nobody cares. Nobody wants to do anything about it. I mean, use the entrance that was designated off of twenty-two. Why aren't they using it? They said because the GPS gives the wrong address? That should have been fixed long ago. It's just, it's not what the town needs, honestly. I'm just, somebody's got to do something. That's just my piece.
You do have time, my man.
All right. I just, I just don't understand why they're not looking at, they want to direct the traffic up Center Street. Why Center Street? Because the hack line doesn't force the wait on the side. They do pull the truckers over and they do take them. And I love it because if they're not supposed to be there, then don't go there. If it's a mistake, I get it. Trucks get off, I get that. But this is constant traffic now. If I'm looking out my window, my house is shaking, the road is a disaster. And what's going to do to the soil lines? Like, there's so much that it's destroying in this town. And it's like, is it for a couple of quick bucks on a warehouse that, from what I hear, they even laid off most of the people?
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
I will, I will say this. Yes, ma'am. It's okay. I cannot agree with you more. The Howard Street extension out to Center Street is not to go up Center Street, is to make that right onto South Main from Center Street and then head out to, I said earlier, the US one twenty-two and then out to twenty, out to, one twenty-two is actually a US highway. It's actually allowed by trucks.
Yeah, I get that.
Yes, ma'am.
I get that.
By no means, I mean they go up to Center Street connecting it up to the rain. So that's first and foremost. Personally, I live on Lincoln and Corliss Avenue, for those who don't know. That's basically, I sit on the right land, Route twenty-two. And ever since Route seventy-eight and Route thirty-three have connected seventy-eight down to Newark and then seventy-eight to PA and then thirty-three. Regardless of what goes on on Howard Street, it's, my quality of life has changed in twenty-eight years that I've lived where I have, so I get that. Before I go any further, do we have any further public comment on the agenda items?
I appreciate it.
Actually, before I get to that, ma'am.
Joan Pierce, one of the Segway Street. The trucks do come down Segway Street with pipes. And like she said, you know, our houses rattle and whatnot. I understand, you know, quality of life changed, you know, but the trucks and stuff don't have no business.
Did you see your name and address for that?
Yes, I did.
Okay. I'm tooting my clock.
Okay, well, you're a little slow there, Mr.. I'm sorry, but.
No, my vice president used to do this for me, but he got into the union stuff.
Don't take my time off because you're talking to me.
I didn't.
So, yeah, the tractor trailers aren't supposed to come down Segway Street, but they are. They're turning off a main street on a Segway Street. We put a warehouse back there. Where do you think they're going to go if they don't put the, like, the thing? We have enough trucks. That's the least of our worry in town. The worries in our town are the things that are going on right now. The drugs.
Ma'am, we have to keep this to agenda items.
Well, it is. It has to.
Drugs are not on the agenda.
Okay, but the trucks are.
Are you talking about the Howard Street project?
Yes, I am.
Okay.
We allow trucks to go on back there. You know they're not going to come down the road, all the traffic, all the diesel spilling and whatnot, the idling, the rattling of the noises. We don't know what the hours are going to be. It's just going to be a disaster. And I understand times have changed and whatnot. But you know what? Like Councilwoman Dejero Almo said, I have to agree with her. We may not agree all the time, but if it was downtown at the other end of town, I would agree. But we have enough going on in town that maybe we shouldn't have a warehouse there because Angersall does have some pretty big warehouses and they are eyesore's. So maybe we should rethink this and think of something else to put back there because there is a lot of truck traffic there now. So, yeah, think about it. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you for your comment. Yes, sir. Council vice president.
So just to clarify, Ms. Baker, thank you for your comments, by the way. We've spoken many times in the past. Yes, we have. And I sympathize because I live around the corner from you and I see it constantly. Each and every time you did contact me, I contacted both the mayor and the chief of police. And you are correct. That problem should have been rectified a long time ago. I have never seen in my life a GPS issue last for almost ten years.
Yep.
So it should be fixed. It's unfortunate that the council is a legislative body and not an administrative body, or we'd be able to handle that. Thankfully, the business administrator, Benjamin, is here this evening to hear your play. We are currently in the process, as council president said, we're not trying to place the truck traffic up Logan or up Center Street. But where we are at in the Perone process, we haven't gotten there yet. So we still have a traffic study that needs to be done. The only thing that we'd be voting on to do tonight would be to amend the plan, send it to the planning board. We haven't approved anything. We haven't, they're not building just yet. They still have amendments they have to achieve. So there is a lot of misinformation out there. A lot of people believe that we're snapping our fingers and we're building a warehouse or we're building a manufacturing plant. or we're building a manufacturing plant. Now, I was very... I've been very vocal in my support of this project because I am a lifelong resident as well, and I have seen nothing back there. Nothing. I would love a new sewer system. But we're going to need something back there other than homeless drug users, right? I mean, I went back there and kids built their own skate park. I hear a lot tonight about Mike Perucci should donate it back. I'm going to disagree. Mike Perucci bought this thing. It belongs to him. I don't believe that Mike should have to donate anything back if it's his. And, I mean, that would be like me asking you to donate your house back to the town of Phillipsburg, or your backyard back to the town of Phillipsburg. This belongs to someone else. Their job is to come before us and provide us with a plan. Our job is to either approve or disapprove of that plan, and we have not gotten to that point just yet. We heard your concerns, and trust me, your concern, I don't think I could have been, you know, more attentive. I probably would have stopped over your house. But we did speak on the phone, and you're 110% correct. There is a problem.
It's a school. And...
Sure. Absolutely. And if we can find a way around that, and we're going to need help with the police department. The chief really, really, really needs to pay attention rather than going out on rides with the mayor at 9:00 in the morning. He really needs to pay attention to the truck traffic that still is occurring out along Lincoln Street, the Lincoln Highway or the Turnpike, but over on Logan Street as well. We need more enforcement with regard to the trucks. If you ticket them, if it's going to stop GPS or no GPS problems, those guys call all the time. Ticket them, it will eventually cease. That's what we're asking. So I would agree with you. But again, I still am in favor of this project, more so than I was the fairest rule that we didn't say.
Before we move on to ordinances of the second reading, most of my meetings in 2021 really don't go over 90 minutes, so we're almost there, but there is a very important subject here today. So I'm going to break it up by doing this on the heels of enforcement, which we're talking about. And I'm going to delineate for you, which I've done in all of 2021 with our council talks, our council chats, and trying to understand our role and the administration's role. Administration is enforcement. Now, watch what I'm going to do. We're about 90 minutes in. We're going to go over exercise, okay? Because I know I need it myself. I would like everyone here in this building, if you have or had a driver's license, to stand up. Now, it feels good to stretch, right? All right, let's try this way. All right, ready? Ready? If anyone has ever driven or had been a passenger through the town of Belvedere, please stand If anyone has ever sped through the town of Belvedere, stand up. Sped through the town of Belvedere. And why did most of the people sit down? Because they enforce. There you go. Administrator, administrator, enforcement, enforcement, everyone. Thank you for entertaining. That felt good to stand up, right? Well, yeah. Thank you. All right, very good. Good. All right. Orders, second reading, ordinance 2021, 16th first reading, June 15, 2021. Second reading this evening, bond ordinance providing for various 2021 capital improvements by the town of Phillipsburg and the county of Warren, state of New Jersey appropriating $2,886,500, therefore authorizing the issuance of $2,742,175 in bonds or notes of the town to finance part of the cost thereof. Do I motion to adopt? Second? This is a second reading, so I am going to allow the public, three minutes to have comment on this. With no comment, I will move on to council discussion. No council discussion, roll call Deputy Clerk Lauder.
Councilman White.
Yes.
Councilman Piazza.
Yes.
Councilwoman DeJorolmo.
Yes.
Council Vice President Polver.
Yes.
Council President McVey.
Yes.
Ordinance number 2021-17, first reading, June 15, 2021. Second reading this evening, bond ordinance providing for various improvements at the sewage treatment plant of the town of Phillipsburg. In the county of Warren, state of New Jersey appropriating $600,000. Therefore, authorizing the issuance of $600,000 in bonds or notes to finance the cost thereof until I had motion to adopt. Second?
Second.
Thank you, ma'am. Public comment on second reading, you have three minutes. There being none, council discussion. There being none, roll call Deputy Clerk Lauder.
Councilman White.
Yes.
Councilman Piazza.
Yes.
Councilwoman DeJorolmo.
Yes.
Council Vice President Polver.
Yes.
Council President McVey.
Yes. Second reading ordinance of ordinance number 2021-18, an ordinance providing the operation of cannabis business within the town of Phillipsburg.
Second. Second. Public comment?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am. If you would kindly just say your name and address for the record.
Lisa Drummond, 171 Summit Avenue. It's my understanding there's a pokey area, the medical marijuana facility already downtown. Is this going to affect their ability to operate?
I don't know. It probably would best come from our council. We know the answer, but it's...
No.
No. He says no like no one else. When it comes from him, it's going to happen. I was just seeing, I was on the turn here or the side of the building. They're very happy to be in Phillipsburg, and they are grandfathered in that facility. For the public comment? Okay. Council discussion.
I just have one question.
Yes, ma'am.
The letter that we got back from Planning Board simply said that they find that this is consistent with the master plan. Is that...
Sufficiency?
No. But is that an opinion that we shouldn't allow it, or just the fact that we're opting to opt out consistent?
Just that the ordinance as presented right now is consistent with that.
Okay. Okay. I just wanted to add that. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Further council discussion?
That answer...
So, the first reading was referred over to the planning board for consistency review, and the planning board issued a letter back to the council saying that it found the ordinance as proposed as being consistent with the council's master plan.
So this is no negative impact on the pokey area, and we still have the opportunity to opt in at any point in time, correct?
Correct.
But if we were to opt in, we could not opt out, and meaning to be a free-for-all in the town of Phillipsburg, is that be correct?
If we didn't take action, one way or the other, it might be opted in automatically. And then there's a five-year moratorium on the town taking any action to remedy that situation. So by opting out now, as the ordinance is for the council for second reading, that's ... There is no provision of opting back in on a shorter time. There is no five-year window. So right now, you preserve your rights. It allows the town council to have an intelligent conversation and discussion with its professionals and with its constituents regarding what makes the most sense for Phillipsburg moving forward. And then if the council decides to amend the ordinance to perhaps commit certain uses in certain zones, it can do that following the process that we're doing tonight.
So my question is to the... If you're 21 years old or older and you're smoking marijuana in front of your home, how does this affect you? It doesn't, right?
It does not.
Okay. Right, that was a question I had earlier today, and I just wanted to make sure that I'm on record. I asked a question. Somebody's smoking marijuana in front of their house because it's legal in the state of New Jersey, and they're okay, and we're not restricting anyone from smoking marijuana in front of their home.
Smoking marijuana is not one of the six classes.
So...
It's not.
I understand, but for the record, like you said, I took that call today. I asked a question. I needed to ask it, so I forgot.
I have a really important question. If they vote yes...
Mr. Minor, I cannot let you, in my meeting, I cannot let you ask a question...
I don't know what they're voting because I just want to know what a yes or no vote means.
I know. Mr. Minor, thank you, sir. Thank you. If you have any further questions, you can come up on a public petition. Thank you. Or email me directly as I say. Thank you, sir. I didn't get a chance under council discussion, so...
See, I don't know which way...
Officer, thank you. Thank you, sir. Thank you very much. I'll continue the meeting with Mr. Minor, ladies and gentlemen.
Your vote counts. If you would make that clear, we'll all know. You vote yes or no, what... How does it affect the answer?
Thank you, officer. Trying to maintain stability here. Okay, so you... Officer, if you can continue him out the door. Thank you. All right, great. I cannot thank Councilor Wenner enough. From its infancy and discussions, we had very lengthy conversations in regard to the legalities of what we have here because of its complexity. I'll give you an example. One of their counselors has... Board in town, New Jersey, now has police tape around their alternative treatment center. They are closed because they did not appropriately follow the steps or follow through with the legal speak that is involved in this ordinance. I want everyone to hear and know what a great job Councilor Wenner did, and along with the rest of the council, ask them those questions, all the questions, to make sure that we can continue to move forward and make it the best interest of Phillipsburg. Also, Angela Knowles, Angela Knowles from Van Cleve, who has worked tirelessly on this ordinance and its interpretation. I am, at this time, also going to ask Deputy Clerk Lauder to put on the... Our, right now, our only one on 2021, our work session, which we have rank control, which we have the demolition, post demolition of Corliss Avenue building. And also, I would like to add this to our work session in the second week of September. At this... Yeah, at this time, I want to just task my peers to please do your homework up into that September. If you have any questions, feel free to ask Councilor Wenner. I will also provide the counselors, there are several of our alternative treatment center, I will provide those numbers as well, for you to ask the questions going into our September work session, and we will take it from there. So, thank you very much. Okay. Roll call Deputy Clerk Lauder.
Yes, we did. I'm sorry. I beg your pardon. Councilman White.
Yes.
Councilwoman DeJorolmo.
Yes.
Councilman...
Let me go.
Councilman... Councilman Piazza.
Yes.
Council Vice President Polver.
Yes.
And Council President McVey.
Yes.
I'm here. Why are you doing this?
Orders of the first reading, there are none this evening. We have the resolutions of the consent agenda, which would be Resolutions 2021-178 through Resolutions 185. Council discussion, or are there any resolutions you would like to hold in discussion?
Just 2021-183.
Yes, ma'am.
Council President, I'd like to pull 2021-179.
All right, this time, I'd like a motion to adopt the consent agenda resolutions 2021-178 through 185, void of 179 and 183. That's what I meant. Roll call Deputy Clerk Lauder.
Councilman White.
Yes.
Councilman Piazza.
Yes.
Councilwoman DeJorolmo.
Yes.
Council Vice President Polver.
Yes.
Council President McVey.
Yes.
Ma'am, you were up on 2021-183.
Yes, reading this, and perhaps it's a misprint. It says Board of Ed facilities. Is this for Board of Education facilities that we're renting, and we are doing the write-down? So does that mean they're paying for buildings they rent from us?
It's a mixture of buildings with Freeman School and the buildings that we operate. We have to write it out for the state of New Jersey. We have those materials and stuff submitted for past two or three years same way. It's all buildings that encompass that we operate and that we have our chemicals.
But this states all chemicals in Board of Ed facilities. It's also Town of Phillipsburg facilities?
Yes, particularly the Armory, the Freeman School, the garage, anywhere we operate.
The firehouses. Anybody, we, the Town of Phillipsburg, not specific to Board of Ed versus Town of Phillipsburg being separate. It should be both. Okay. And second question on this was, we have a lot of buildings. Who manages that OSHA and RTK on a day-to-day basis? I mean, SDSs are pretty common. You have to have them in all the buildings, not just once a year sweep it. It's a maintenance... It's a building maintenance issue.
It's maintained. As the chemicals come in, it's maintained. We have a post in the offices. We update them every time something changes.
Okay, every time we buy something?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, that's all we need. Thank you.
Further council discussion? I do want to take the time, though, to thank our Business Administrator because, if I'm not mistaken, we came in at a very low price on that, and that was worked out, where we came in at a very...
On this?
Yes, sir.
I would compliment Deputy Clerk Lauder.
We were in discussion of that, and thank you so much, young lady.
She worked on that and brought it forward.
I know we had a very, very good deal with Town of Phillipsburg. Thank you very much. Motion to adopt 2021-183?
Sue.
Second.
Roll call Deputy Clerk Lauder.
Councilman White.
Yes.
Councilman Piazza.
Yes.
Councilwoman DeJorolmo.
Yes.
Council Vice President Polver.
Yes.
Council President McVey.
Yes.
Council Vice President, 2021-179.
Sir, I'm in a motion to disable indefinitely Resolution 2021-179 until I can obtain or we can obtain more information regarding the property. So that would be a motion to disable.
I'll second it. Roll call Deputy Clerk Lauder.
Councilman White.
No.
Councilman Piazza.
Jessica Moore, in progress.
Yes.
Councilwoman DeJorolmo.
No.
No.
Counsel Vice President Polper.
Yes.
Counsel President McVeigh.
Yes.
Counsel, council members, do we have any new business?
I do, sir. I think you should be on, if it's more to do, sue injuries there for owner.
I don't think this one's not, so. I will jump ahead of my peers. Counselor Wenner had sent out a resolution, the aforementioned resolution. For all the council members, this would be Resolution 2021-186. It's a resolution approving the proposed construction of a light manufacturing facility in accordance with NJSA 4812A-1, and also authorizing and directing the mayor to present amendments to the redevelopment amendment, agreement, excuse me, and between the town and the redeeveler. Do I have a motion to adopt?
So move.
I'll second. Council discussion?
Yes, I don't think it's prudent to move forward with this tonight. The public has not had the opportunity to look at this resolution and to possibly have input on this resolution, and this resolution, as it states in there, it says construction of approximately 420,000 square foot warehouse, not manufacturing, says warehouse.
Good, sir.
Yes, yeah, he said he's done.
Further council discussion? Thank you, sir.
Yes, I have some as well. I agree, I actually noticed that comment as well, it does say warehouse throughout, as well as a few other comments. Town Council serves as the redevelopment authority, so I'm not sure why we're turning over the redevelopment contract to the mayor's office.
The mayor negotiates all contracts.
I know, but, well, that's why I asked Councilman Wyatt, when this was originally negotiated, who negotiated it, and he said Town Council did, in conjunction with the mayor.
Right.
They did it together, so I think we shouldn't just turn this over to the mayor to negotiate, I think Town Council should be doing it. We're the redevelopment authority, I think we should be highly involved in it. It's just my opinion. And, as well as, and Rich will let me know if I'm incorrect on this, but this property's in the UEZ. Does that go before DCI for approval then?
I don't think that's for that.
I was reading one of the New Jersey statutes regarding any projects in York and in the prison, and it related to UEZ, DCI approval in advance. So I wasn't sure if that had taken place, because this does lie in the UEZ. And third piece, this is asking us to approve amendments to the redevelopment agreement, but we haven't read what those amendments exactly are. I'm not sure why we have to give up the residential component. This says remove it from the redevelopment agreement, I'm not sure why we have to do that, why can't we have both? In case this property gets sold and suddenly somebody magically wants to build residential and then we have to just circle over again. Do we have to relinquish the residential?
The approvals that are currently in place are for residential, so you can only have one set of approvals, right, for a project. So you couldn't have both approvals for residential and for warehouses.
So, again, coming back to some of what Councilman Wyatt had referred to, I'd feel better if we had some of that information in front of us before we executed this resolution, and we don't have any of that context, especially because that redeveloper agreement would have two pieces in it. One would be if a pilot was considered, and, you know, I'll go on the record right now, I'm not opposed to short-term pilots at all, they can be very good economic stimulants, long terms are a whole other conversation, but that would be part of that, wouldn't it?
Yes, the pilot would have to be approved by the council. If it were to be a pilot part of this project, that would have to, so we could argue.
So, my point is for expediency for the developer. I don't want this to get hung up where the mayor thinks one thing and then council comes in and disagrees, and here we go again, and it just takes 60 days longer than it has to if we had worked together on it from the beginning, rather than turning it into the mayor's office. I'd prefer to see Town Council take care of that, and we, not a subcommittee or the redevelopment authority, I think we should all be involved in that process. That's just a thing, that's what I stand on. We're gonna vote, we're gonna vote, but those are my comments.
Thank you, ma'am.
I guess Joe opposite, I think the separation of legislative and executive keeps the check of balance, it keeps undue influence out of the mayors. It allows the mayor to make an uninfluenced decision and then have the council make an equally uninfluenced decision on this type of property. There is no tit-for-tat trade-offs, deals done behind closed doors during negotiation. So I think the way it's set up, if it was done in the past that way, and it's not supposed to be, now's the time to correct that. If it's allowed, I'd be open to hearing, but I do feel that the two bodies should be separated.
Thank you, sir. Counsel Vice President.
No, sorry, sports projects still standing their way, like I said, we're putting the corp for the horse on this one, I'm ready to vote yes.
Roll call Deputy Clerk Launberg.
Counselman Wyatt.
No.
Counselman Piazza.
Yes.
Counselwoman DiGeralma.
No.
Counsel Vice President Polper.
Yes.
Counsel President McVeigh.
Yes.
Is there further new business amongst the council members?
Sir, I do, I have a few. In 2019, Discovering Body voting, we may not bid and awarded a job to contract a completed curb cut from the services on South Main Street. That administration at that time did not carry out that request. It's been two years, and I'd like to reintroduce the project that our next meeting will be paid out of capital so that we can fulfill our promise to Mrs. Lee and to the disabled members who struggle to gain entry into that facility. So I would like to make that request, that we put it on the next agenda and pay it out of capital. I don't know why Mayor Ellis did not follow through, the only thing I think it'd be still devastated after November, and didn't happen.
Further council discussion?
Can we pay that out? We just adopted the bond ordinance, we can't change the use.
Bond ordinance is for roads, roads and off-site.
Okay, so.
Dependant of that, at the next meeting, you would have residents can authorize Van Cleve to do the engineering work, go out to bid, and then it would go out to bid, and then he would order to take the funds from that.
Okay, all right.
I will get that, as Counsel Vice President Polper said, I'll make that, I'll talk to Stan and Tim and get the ball over.
Thank you, Brian. The second item that I have is one of, one that I find important, and it happened on July 7th, 2020, the community of Phillipsburg had lost a devastating, we suffered devastating loss due to addiction. A gentleman by the name of Jesse Delgado, who was a lifelong Phillipsburg resident and resided on Mercer Street, most disvalued from addiction, and those who knew him or had watched him or up here in town have been calling for a memorial of some kind. And after conferring with Counselman Piazza, who also knew Jesse, we decided to propose to rename Mercer Street Park to the either Jesse Delgado Memorial Park or Jesse Delgado Recovery Park, which would be Delgado Park for short, where it was known to many that this would be the park where they could find Jesse growing up. He would be there playing basketball with many of the neighborhood kids almost daily. Now, just speaking with Counselman Wyatt, yesterday he initially embraced the idea, and we discussed a memorial wall to be constructed and located at that park, which would reveal the amount of those loved ones that we've lost here in our community to addictions. Discovering Body has always championed itself, and it has taken pride in recognizing everyone in our community, regardless of their status, and this would be another perfect example of that. We have always recognized each and every single resident as one. I've spoken with Recreation Advisory Committee Chairwoman Davis and Superintendent Kopezi, both of whom supported the idea, therefore, at the next council meeting, I would request a meeting to be placed before council for the renaming, and Superintendent Kopezi and the Recreation Advisory Committee Committee can begin working for a fall ceremony commemorating the proposed change. Earlier tonight, I was asked what were Mr. Delgado's contributions. Although I feel that the question was a little bit backhanded and slighted, and I think we've acknowledged a lot more people for less. Jesse Delgado's contributions to our community transcended that of what the infliction he succumbed to. He provided countless hours of time with our youth, teaching them how to play baseball and basketball. He worked countless hours for years attempting to keep those in our community sober and clean. Unfortunately, after years of struggling with his diagnosis of illness, we lost him. But we have an opportunity, an opportunity at the next meeting to allow his memory to live on and recognize the fact that there probably really shouldn't be a stigma of addiction. There is, it can happen to anyone. No, he wasn't a superhero, he didn't save lives, he didn't save anybody from a fire, but he was somebody in this town. And I would hope that Discovering Body would somehow find a way to support this at the next council meeting. And that's all I have, sir.
Thank you, Counsel Vice President, for that part of truthful and sobering experience. My new business was mentioned earlier this evening, I would like to take ownership of the Howard Street extension, I think it's responsibility of Discovering Body to take a look at our roadways, our engineering, should have been done a long time ago, and I'm proud to at least introduce it, make it, may not work, but at least I want to take responsibility of, Mercer Street is very dear to me, spent a lot of time there as a young man, and. If it would be okay, and I believe our engineer, Mr. Shrek, is still here, would it be possible for you to gently explain the possibilities of town looking into this and maybe working with the developer, but as far as, we've taken, there's different projects in the past we've had here in town, I've not been on council for them, different roadway projects that maybe a little miscommunicated and even to this day just maybe seem incomplete by some, incomplete by others, so in order to avoid that, I'd rather take ownership of it than laying it in the hands of any one particular property owner or developing a project in town, so would it be okay if you can explain some of the particulars of this, sir?
Roadway to size is difficult, grant opportunities would exist, possibly with DOT, the issue with the Howard Street extension is acquisition of the right of way. We don't own it, so that's the issue that has to be discussed with council. If we had clear right of way, we could perceive it, we don't own the property.
I did bring this up, so I will look into it further and present council with information moving forward that this is something that's operationally feasible, financially feasible as well. I'll take ownership of that, or if anyone on council would like to join me in that working with the information fact-finding or moving this forward, I would gladly welcome that. So, let me know. Okay. Public petition, I will say that, again, we will try to remain civility if at all possible. You will have three minutes, I will remind everyone to state your name and address for the break.
Keith Kennedy, 898 Hill Street, and I have several questions. Why was the meeting on April 15th with Green Acres not open to the public, and who did attend this meeting?
Could you ask further what meeting we're talking about?
I just know there was a meeting with Green Acres on April 15th.
If you know there was a meeting, who was there?
I'm asking you.
If no one was there, was there a meeting, that you treated on the forest? I don't know what you're talking about. I don't know what you're talking about. Counselman Piazza, were you at a meeting?
I was not at any.
Counselwoman?
So you're saying there wasn't a meeting on April 15th at Green Acres?
I'm not saying, I'm saying none of the council was here.
I can only say I was not at any Green Acres meeting, ever.
That's next day.
Okay, all right, my last question. What is the number and name of the ordinance that restricts eminent domain in Area 1 that was referred to by Attorney Wenner at the last Town Council meeting?
Could you repeat that, please?
What is the number and name of the ordinance that restricts eminent domain in Area 1 that was referred to by Attorney Wenner at the last Town Council meeting?
Are you talking about the Union Square waterfront? So there's not an, there's not an order, Mr. Minor has previously discussed an ordinance that restricts the eminent domain, I don't have any idea what he was talking about, there is, there was an authorization for the planning board by this council, directed the planning board to undertake a preliminary investigation for that area one that you're speaking of, to see whether eminent domain, whether physically here, but a redevelopment area for condemnation purposes, that's going on currently, so that has not been completed.
Stand.
Stand.
Yes.
The waterfront, the waterfront condemnation study, that's still ongoing?
Yes, yes, we had a, we had a wait till the funding agreement was completed and we're moving forward again.
Sir, so that's where that's at. Mr. Minor did bring up an ordinance, I don't.
Sorry about that. Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you, sir, for your time.
Reggie Ragwick, 898 Hill Street. So, it's my understanding, I believe that Perucci developer said that Mike's owned that property for 15 years, so there's not a rush to get something on that property. There's not a rush to put a warehouse or a manufacturing, but we all know it's gonna be a warehouse. There's no manufacturing going on right now. We have, right over there in Enderstall, drive around, more warehouses than we need in Phillipsburg. So we've got to have warehouses also in a historic downtown Phillipsburg. We all know that's a bad idea. Mike can be a little bit more patient, Mike Perucci I'm talking about. Please tell Mike that he has an opportunity to donate that property, and when Mike's on his debt bed.
Sir, sir, you must address.
I know the rules.
Yes, please.
Yeah, I'm sorry. So Mike has an opportunity, I think Mike will do the honorable thing and donate that property. Counselman Polper said something about you and ask for my house, but I think Mike's a little more financially well than I am, and Mike worked hard for that. But Mike can contribute to Phillipsburg by donating that property, so we can turn Phillipsburg into an attraction. That riverfront is our last opportunity, I think, to make Phillipsburg an attraction. That riverfront is our last opportunity, I think, to make Phillipsburg an attraction. We have an election this year. I think the voters should make a decision. I'm pretty sure we have Democrats who think that that's not the best use of that property, and we have two of the three Republicans who think it is. I think the third one does, too. We have two Republicans here who think it's a bad idea, and I agree with Honorable Two Council Members, DeGraalmo and Wyatt. You're Honorable Two, but let's do the honorable thing. Let's get Mike to either donate the property or we change the zoning back to residential. That property is vacant now, something should be done, but what should be done is part of a total riverfront that Phillipsburg will be on the map. Phillipsburg will not be on the map with another warehouse. People will laugh at us. We're the poorest town in the county. We don't need a warehouse. We need that riverfront attraction. So, let's invite Murphy over here. Phil Murphy, running for governor. Let's invite Sidorelli over here. They must have some ideas. Maybe I can talk to Mike, too. So, let's do the honorable thing, and let's not put a warehouse in downtown historic Phillipsburg, and let's make Phillipsburg an attraction. Let's put Phillipsburg on the map. And we will put Phillipsburg on the map when we show how we can develop that riverfront, but not with a warehouse, my friends. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, for your comment. Thank you for the time again. David Morissette, 500 White, Phillipsburg, New Jersey. Okay, again, it was great, Corona Construction came and presented their new, I guess you would call it, updated concept plan. This concept plan is so significantly different than the original concept plan, but I really think it should go back to the Land Use Board, because the Land Use Board made their decision with information that it had from the original concept plan. That's, that's the statement. It sounded like you were talking about Howard Street Extension. You were looking on how to figure that out, how to get that going. It sounded to me like you were trying to get right-of-way, and it sounds kind of to me like you're looking at employing eminent domain. I don't know if that's correct or not. In answer to a previous question, during the previous administration, the council removed the possibility of eminent domain from the riverfront redevelopment plan, and it was explained to me by people who know about development, that no serious developer will actually come into towns and develop without eminent domain, because it's a crapshoot and they don't know if they're going to be able to get the properties. After the last administration left office, one of the first things that happened was eminent domain was put back into the redevelopment plan, which is one of the things that will allow development to move forward. So, basically, it was stalled in the last administration by council. And last question, last question is, conflicts of interest are a big deal, and I thank Councilwoman DeGraalmo and Councilman Wyatt for being forthright and forthcoming about having been represented by the law firm Florio Perucci Steinhardt and Capellit. Councilwoman DeGraalmo has not been represented. The three people that have voted for the rezoning have not been forthcoming, although I do think I have Councilman Fulmer on video saying he paid the law firm for some, some work due to a suit that was brought by Mayor Ellis. I could be wrong with that. And Councilman Piazza and Council President McVeigh, I haven't heard from either of you on that topic, so...
Who cares?
So, still no comment?
My comment is, thank you for your comments, sir.
Tim and 230 South Main Street. What I'm going to bring up tonight is the Orbel property that you're voting on. The Orbel property.
Orbel?
Across between the middle school and the Perkew Center. Because the last thing Phillipsburg needed is more housing rentals. And New Jersey rental property owners cannot refuse to rent with Section 8 tenant contrary to what this developer says. Phillipsburg already has the highest quantity percentage of rental dwellings in Warren County. Most police calls occur rentals as opposed to other owner-occupied homes. Phillipsburg has the highest primary in Warren County. Phillipsburg has almost twice the number of sex offenders as the next three largest towns combined. Phillipsburg with 36, Kowdier five, Pakistan seven, and Washington seven. Property values are barometer of the desirability of the community in a recent study. Phillipsburg had the lowest median property values in northern North Jersey. And all but six mean now municipalities in South Jersey. The Riverside Housing Development never materialized despite the 30-year discounted tax bill they got. The proposed Stockton Street project was turned down by the climate. Years ago, this warm street project received approvals for senior housing, and a few years later, the owners reapplied to remove the age restrictions, but were turned down. Many neighbors objected at the planning board meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Further public comment?
Yes, sir. Please state your name and address for the record.
Pat Petrow, 844 Hill Street. I thought they said there were 90 truck bays at this proposed building. Is that correct?
Mr. DeBeere, this here?
Roughly eighty, I believe.
Eighty? Well, you would go up to Angersall there. Romax has 80 truck bays, a warehouse. Take a look at what 80 semi-trailers look like, and picture all the driving back and forth on Main Street. That's all I have to say.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Further public comment? At this time, I will close. Council over time. Councilman Wyatt?
I'm good.
Councilwoman DeGraalmo?
I'm good.
Councilman Piazza?
I'm good this evening.
Yeah, I got to address some things. I couldn't talk to Mr. Morissette directly, because he's currently litigant in a frivolous lawsuit against town Phillipsburg, so I will say this. First, I'd like to get to the downtown historic area and the comments regarding the Democrats supporting one thing, the Republicans supporting another. In my hands, I hold an official letter from the Office of the Mayor dated August 19th, 2019, signed by Stephen R. Ellis, where he addresses the New Jersey Department of Health Division of Medical Marijuana. I'm not going to reach the whole thing, because it would be boring, but paragraph number three states, "It is my understanding that GSCC plans to open an alternative treatment center at 125 through 165 Howard Street, town of Phillipsburg, Warren County, New Jersey. I have no objections to this facility, as long as it meets its current zoning within that area." The Democrats supported the alternative treatment center and the cultivation center down on Howard Street, but because it's an election year, they're going to play games. That's an official letter, and we can put that right on record. You can also get it out of Mayor Ellis's email if you wish. You're welcome. I did also come across another, another document. This is from Mayor Ellis. It kind of disturbs me a little bit. He claims that there's only about a foot of clean fill over the old dump area that's now known as Delaware River Park, and that is so close to the river. But this is the Delaware River Park that was out there, we were being told it was being sold. But I am concerned, because if it is only that much clean fill over the old dump area, I think we should have that taken a look at from the big, perhaps maybe not put a trail on it, but that could just be me. You could use that as well for your record. It's even more so interesting listening to Mr. Morissette talk about conflict of interests when he sat on the planning board and was in a big conflict of interest by trying to railroad LMR, who was an advocate before the planning board, and then went around and told a bunch of lies about them as well. And interestingly enough, I'm really curious as to what the personal vendetta is against the Florio, Perucci, and Steinhardt firm, because in Mayor Ellis's emails, it comes up a lot, and this one happened to be towards, to John Moore, our insurance gentleman. CC Sherri Corcoran, who is the Vice President of the Democrats, blind-carbon copy David Morissette. John, I need to talk to you about why the insurance company sends all-town lawsuits to Perucci, Florio, and Steinhardt. Something isn't right. Now, that for your records. And why was the eminent domain taken out of the plan last time? Well, I can tell you that. Mayor Ellis, in an email, and I'll get that email to you, well, that man had a personal vendetta against the Cobb family and admitted it in an email. So, in order to protect those people, we took the eminent domain clause out. That's why. Because nothing under the Ellis administration ran fairly, nothing. You coordinated lawsuits against us. I have that right here as well in it. To Attorney Winter, interestingly enough, he blind-carbon copied the litigants against the town.
Wow.
So, why did we have to pay out all of this money in settlements? Well, we didn't get to see our day at court, and we know the politicians didn't want to see their day at court, because they would have lost. But it's because Steve Ellis railroaded this town, the town he served, the town he was elected to serve. He railroaded us, so that not only could he help the friends that he got jobs to after we took them away, because you asked us to take them away, right? Once we did that, they couldn't use this town as an ATM machine anymore. They decided to falsely charge us with all kinds of craziness, and they worked together, right? With one lawyer, was it? Right, one lawyer?
Yeah.
You know this for your records, too. You were the worst administration this town has ever seen, and I'm not saying we're perfect. We're not. But the one thing I won't do is lie to these residents, and I will pull everything I have from those emails and every over request I've ever filed. I have been open and honest with every single person in this building. I support Mike Perucci. I like what he's doing. If that's, I mean, if you have a problem, and I have a problem with development, and I like a developer, that's on you. You moved here in 1995. Your candidates, they moved here long after that, except for Mr. Kennedy. Mike Perucci was born and raised here, and I've said it before, self-made. If he wants to get back to this town, I'm going to let him, as long as I'm up here. Voters vote me out, that's okay, too. But I'm going to do what I believe is best for these residents.
I know you had a long list of emails here, sir. That's, that was our life for the first two years. That's why things were stalled, and that's why no one called, called us for anything. We're busy now, and we're busy for good reason, because we're a hot ticket, and we're open for business. We're reasonable, we're truthful, and we're transparent. I said before, I was voted as a 3-2 council president. I didn't mind that at all, because how boring would a 5-go be with five Republicans every single week? Quite honestly, that'd be a little fishy to be. So, I don't mind when we disagree. It's quite all right. We all have our own minds, and we're an honor-hungover council. Those first two years were nuts. I can tell you that for a fact. Whatever you want. You want to start at me being investigated by the Attorney General's Office over clean, dry cleaning? I have an email from Mayor Ellis telling me that go ahead and work it out with CFO, even though I wasn't allowed to speak to any town employees. I was investigated by the Attorney General's Office for bid rigging over contractual issues to try to save the money, which to this day, I've saved the town over $40,000 in the dry cleaning by just asking that. I was then further told, not once, twice, I was going to get arrested by the chief of police for things like raking a ball field for the first town conference, because prior administration didn't really care for that club, and, well, they were going to play on a very dangerous field. It was Council President Fulmer that arranged for all five council members that Saturday to go and rake that field until October, or they'll be arrested. So, I've been told I was going to be arrested twice. I had DIFUS called on me, and I know who called DIFUS. I know what organization called DIFUS. And my daughter had to sit and tell county people that, no, my dad doesn't do drugs, and no, my dad doesn't put his hands on me. And I had to do that. And they wanted me to submit to urine tests. I told my people, "You're right now." Because you know why? I didn't know you were coming here, so I'll do it right now. You go through my house, I'll sit right on my couch. You can go look for all the bottles and drugs and needles all throughout the house. That was pretty cool, right? For $51 a week, all for a council seat, because the former administration didn't know how to run the town, and the other side is upset. We've gone 0-6 the last four years. But that's what I have to deal with. I'm not even done yet. Mr. Morissette, you actually had the cops call on me, because I patted you on the back during the primary election of Steve Ellis and Mark Lutz at Freeman School, and there's people in this building that witness to that, and all I did was wish you luck. I just wished you and your candidates luck. And then I had a lieutenant come to my house and said I assaulted you. That was pretty cool, too. I significantly doubted my daughter earlier that evening, because I'm a threat, because I don't back down, even though some of these council members. Do I dare mention even my job, which is the fake Twitter account that came out of 08865 at Prudential? And I had to sit by human resources people with my professional, and I almost swore career on the line. You have a job? You know where I can't get a job? Phillipsburg, because you're fighting, your organization and everything to it is fighting jobs for Phillipsburg, which the Peron industry is trying to bring here, along with other industries. Jobs. I'd be, I'd be looking for one if I didn't have the reputation I have. But I don't go around crying on Facebook about this. I don't even, most of you people don't even know this story, do you? Those, that's my story, my three and a half years on council. I just continue to do my business, because I'm bigger than that, right? I'm bigger than that. You heard what he's got? Now you're, now you hear what I got? I've got some real personal shit going on from the other side, but I'm running again because I like what I'm doing, and I want to see success for this town that we're this close to making it. And it just makes me want to win more, and I'm going to do it. And that's what I'm going to do. I'm not going to lie. I got one car, I got one house, I got one job that has to serve you people, and I'm going to do it to December 31st and hopefully beyond. Thank you. We have a motion, but before I get into that motion, Deputy Clerk Lattenberry, do we have anything from Grace Lukeville, the request to wait for your sale?
That's coming up in the fourth.
I will wait on that. It was very appropriately written and kindly written by Ms. Garrison. I just want to make sure we do not, I don't sell myself short while I'm trying to defend all the lies that are in the newspapers and the television. We can possibly put that under motions as well. Slip that in there. Okay, wonderful. Thank you for that. That's what happens. There's a lot going on. All right. I have a motion for the applications for active firebreakers. Lucas Todd for Lincoln Engine Company, number two, and Angelina Pavon, if I'm pronouncing that correctly, for Lincoln Engine Company number two. Second one. Second, council discussion. Roll call Deputy Clerk Lattenberry.
Councilman Wyatt?
Yes.
Councilman Piazza?
Yes.
Councilwoman DeGraalmo?
Yes.
Council Vice President Fulmer?
Yes.
Council President McVeigh?
Yes, Council Vice President, since that is in your hand, and I'm going to ask Counselor Wood or something on executive session, would you... Wyner something on executive session, would you mind going ahead?
Absolutely. I motion to appoint Dustin Pierce to the Housing Authority vacancy beginning in August. He's currently serving there now, and the term is up, and it will be for a reappointment in August, and that's my appointment. A motion to approve Dustin Pierce.
Second. Council discussion? We'll call Deputy Clerk Lautenberry.
Councilman Wyatt?
Yes.
Councilman Piazza?
Yes.
Councilwoman DeGiraro?
I'm staying.
Council Vice President Fulmer?
Yes.
Council President McVeigh?
Yes. I do have an executive session listed on here for a resolution to provide for an executive session to town council. Town of Phillipsburg to the purpose of considering...
The property disposition?
Yes. Yeah, that's where I was going to go. Yes, that's right. We had executive session for revolving loan. The answers I was looking for was to come from Mayor Dr. Sane. He's not here tonight, so I will postpone that. Another executive session, Councilor Wimmer would like to enter an executive session for the purpose of...
Discussion regarding property disposition of town. No action will be taken when we come out.
This will be an executive session?
No more than 60 seconds.
How about that?
We're in executive session for approximately one to two minutes, during which time we discuss the disposition of town-owned property taken by way of interim foreclosure. No action was taken in the executive session.
With the permission of council, I mistakenly was off of an agenda which did not include under motions, previous section two, executive session, our Portobello Blusa application Do I have a motion to adopt it? So, second. Council discussion?
I'll just bring up same point. I don't think a nonprofit organization should be paying for parking, nor do I think anybody bringing a lot of people to town should be paying for parking. I won't oppose this because I agree with the event. So, I'll vote for it with it in, but I think the mayor's office or Department of Recreation should reconsider that parking fee. We've got tubers coming in from all over the place. Nobody's paying. In fact, they advertise free parking in Riverside Way. Want to make money on parking each year? Get kiosks and go put people charging coming in from out of town like they do in Lambertville. I think it's a better way to do it. And they have a great gift back. They give people the money right back in the restaurants to pay it. So at least you know they're servicing a local business. So that way, it actually becomes free parking. I don't think we should be charging nonprofits who are trying to do a nice of them for the town for parking, but nobody agrees.
No, I agree.
Yeah, just same opinion. I don't think people should be parking. Look what Joe's does. They bring people all over the place. We don't charge, and they park. It would be safe, and it'd be silly. I just, I don't see the point. People come here, they spend money here. We should not be charging the organization off if they meant to park. It just, it doesn't seem right to me. That's it.
Further council discussion? We'll call Deputy Clerk Lautenberry.
Councilman Wyatt?
Yes.
Councilman Piazza?
Yes.
Councilwoman DeGiraro?
Yes.
Council Vice President McVeigh?
You just amended, right? But I'll say yes.
I'm sorry, guys. Council Vice President Fulmer, right beside her.
Yes.
And Council President...
It's like I'm at work. I'm a little retweet or something. Yeah, I'm good. I'll get my resume out every once in a while, so I can. Motion to adjourn.
Submove.
Bye.